We'll call the meeting to order. Thank you for joining us. Roll call, Madam Pres- or Secretary.
Secretary. All five members are here.
Wonderful. Will you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mrs. Freed?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have a very special presentation brought to us by Dr. Wall.
Thank you very much, Leila. We have a very exciting opportunity to recognize our green team that represents not only Carmel High School but Carmel Clay Schools. And it's a culmination of 20 years of work that has gone into this. And Bob Yule is- give us a wave, Bob. We'll introduce you formally in a minute. Integral as this program became, went from Energy Ed to becoming the green efforts and the green team as we know it now. And very excited to be recognized at Washington DC this summer at a national ceremony which took place at the Capitol. Part of that was a tour of the White House, which was a nice, nice piece for everyone. But again, this really is a district recognition with the high school getting the award. And we have students here tonight that will be introduced and we're very happy for them to be here and their parents. But this is a legacy leaving event. Anytime we can reduce our carbon mark on the environment, we should and Carmel Clay Schools recognize long before many others that this was something that could be done now rather than wait. And in so doing, it's instilled that legacy in the students that go to, not only our elementary, middle schools, but then culminating at the high school. I know some of these students started their green team membership before they were in high school. And that's exciting to see that go through the system. So I'm going to, what we're going to do for parents for photo ops and whatever you want to do, we're going to recognize at the podium. And we're going to bring the students up and get certificates as well as the adults today. And the adults and I will, Margot is going to speak on behalf of the group. Margot Gibson, BJ Massey, Marcia Roberts, Mary Ellen, St. Angelo, and Bob Yule are the adults. So if you guys could join me at the podium and then we'll recognize the students.
I have the pleasure of introducing the president of the Environmental Club at Carmel High School, Elizabeth Bach.
Okay, and I am here, a part of the CCS Green Team is a program called the Carmel Green Teen Micro Grant Program. And I am here to recognize the Carmel High School students who are part of that program. Through that program, throughout, all throughout Carmel, environmental youth service projects are funded in Carmel Clay Schools and out of Carmel Clay Schools. And were it not for the dedication of the students and the staff at Carmel High School and parent volunteers, this program wouldn't be a success that it is. So from Carmel High School, I would like to recognize Shiva Valabannini. Shiva has been a Carmel Green Teen Youth Board member for a year. Also, Sitha Valabannini, his sister, who's also been on the Youth Board for a year. They both started in Carmel Middle School and then continued their efforts in the high school. Also Erin Varnah, who is a sophomore at Carmel High School. He has been on the Carmel Green Teen Board for four years. Thank you so much.
And if I could, I'm going to recognize these leaders up here who have led the, not only the students but the faculty and staff. And Margot Gibson. Marcia. Marcia Roberts. Mary St. Angelo. And Bob Yule. As you can see, Marcia and I were fortunate and John Williams, Mr. Williams is not feeling well this evening, so that's why he couldn't make the meeting tonight. But Marcia and I were privileged enough to be in DC and the recipient. Proceed. This is the plaque that is hanging in the high school now. And it's, it's a nice representation of the sustainability and the recognition of respecting the environment and reducing that carbon mark. Marcia, I don't know if you want to say anything about our trip or you want me to just, any thoughts? It was a tremendous experience.
What I thought was so exciting was to hear what the other 90, or the other 47 schools and nine other districts are doing. And it just, you know, gets you excited for what other people are involving their classrooms in and their students with and it fills you with possibilities of what we can do here in Carmel Schools. So it was, it was an honor to go and represent this school district and I was very fortunate to be able to do that, so.
And as Marcia said, we were one of 48 schools recognized nationally for the green efforts. And if Indiana allows for there to be district recognition, as Bob and I and the team talked about, we would like to submit for that. We just, that was not an option this time to submit as a district. But if they do, we would submit because we feel very confident that this is a district program and we would represent the state of Indiana quite well in that, in that regard as well. So students, if you could make your way to the administration and the board would like to congratulate you and team, team leaders. Thank you for all your efforts this year.
Parents, faculty, and students, you have an opportunity, we're going to pause for a couple moments. If you wanted to get together for a group picture or what have you, please feel free to do so. We'll resume our meeting in three, four minutes, so you have an opportunity to do so. And then when you're finished, you're welcome to stay for the duration of the meeting, but if you'd like to step out, that's okay as well. So we'll go ahead and pause. Okay, at this point in time, we'll resume our meeting. Seeing that we do not have any public participation, we'll move right along to consent. May I get a motion to approve consent?
So move.
Second? Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, first action item we have is our personnel reclassification of administration brought to us by Dr. Wall. Dr. Wall?
Thank you, Leila. As indicated and stated, as part of the administrative reorganization review and study that began last year, we've looked at different components in different phases, first being realignment in the two divisions at ESC and departments underneath therein. And this year, we're in the stages of restructuring and potentially reallocation of resources. It became clear as we did the realignment that some positions had changed in scope and expectation of that, of that particular position. So as an ongoing update to the board and ongoing process as we look at the restructuring efforts to better serve the district, the 15 schools and the school community, this evening recommending that the Assistant Superintendent of Business Affairs position be reclassified to be Associate Superintendent of Business Affairs position with a commensurate increase in salary for that position as well as 401A contribution and potential incentive compensation for that position as well. Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, again, those are the two positions. Roger McMichael obviously occupying the business position and Amy Dudley occupying the curriculum instruction assessment. Those are the two divisions that we have in the realignment. And we'd like to add, provide incentive compensation to the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment as well. The high school principal position, John Williams, recommending reclassifying that position, the same classification as the Assistant Superintendent position, maintain the principal title and incentive compensation potential as well. All three that have, over the, over the years, had the ability to sell back some of their vacation days. We'd like to put that in those positions up to 10 days if they have those accrued annually. We believe this is consistent with the change in the expectation and comparability as we looked at other compensation models. And as you can see, if all costs would be assumed, the maximum cost would be $47,225, but we've got excess of that as we look at the elimination of some duties and reduction of duties, it takes us well beyond that figure.
Thank you, Dr. Wall. May I get a motion on the table, please?
So move.
Second? Thank you very much, Mr. Phillips. Discussion. Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. These seem like very solid, forward-thinking proposals to me, Dr. Wall. You may have said so already, but please remind me, would, would these changes adhere to the position so that if we were to have a new principal, for example, at the Carmel High School, would that new person inherit the title?
These are recommended position, reclassifications and restructuring. The, as you can see, the individuals' names are parenthetically in the recommendation, but these are position recommendations that they're occupying at this time.
Thank you. Other questions? Mrs. Freed?
I just think we should probably make sure we point out that with financial affairs and the state of Indiana, I'm very pleased with the fact that we've more than offset this additional cost by reductions in other areas. And I think that we should always be mindful of adding positions and increasing pay of where we're going to get the money from. And I appreciate your, your attention to that detail.
Thank you.
I'd have to reiterate exactly what Mrs. Freed has said. The fact that on the background information, you clearly point out where this cost savings or neutral expense comes from. So what that, we would hope to see that in the future on other, other recommendations as well, so thank you for that. Other questions, concerns, feedback? Okay, well then, let's take a vote. All in favor of supporting the reorganization, or reclassification? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have substitute pay increase.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Bannenburg. As we discussed at the July Board Meeting, the recommendation is for the board to approve an increase for the pay for substitutes for this school year, retroactive to the beginning of this school year as follows. There are some specific special education positions, the FIAH's program, the life skills program, and the emotional disability programs and retired Carmel Clay School teachers that we would recommend the board approving an increase in those rates to $80 per day and increase all other substitute positions for $70, to $70 per day. And as you just alluded to, we tried to explain at the bottom that this might be an additional cost of approximately $18,000, but at the same time, we anticipate possibly using fewer professional development days during the year, thus there might be no net increase as a result of this recommendation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Newman. May I get a motion on the table? Mrs.
I move that we approve the recommendation to increase the pay for substitutes for 2014 and 2015.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Discussion. Mrs. Nouse?
Yes, we had very many subs in the system up to this point. Hopefully not, but.
Do you mean thus far this year?
Right.
Excuse me, I don't have an exact number. Obviously, it's, it's less heavy here at the beginning of the year than as cold and flu season comes at us. We haven't had a lot of substitutes, no, but we have had some.
So do we need to go back and, and pay them this after we approve it? Or have you been paying them this all along?
Thank you for clarifying. They actually haven't been paid yet in our system. We have, we have planned for this to be approved, but nothing's been actually paid yet.
Okay.
So if the board chose not to approve it, I think Mr. McMichael's team could press the appropriate buttons to have that be changed, but we're trying to be ready for this Friday's pay in a manner that anticipates the approval.
Okay.
Any other questions? Great, we're ready to take a vote. Then all in favor of supporting the pay increase for substitute teachers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, moving on with Dr. Dudley for material adoption for the IB psychology program.
Yes, great, thank you. This evening, I bring to you a recommendation to adopt a new text for our IB psychology. And you may be wondering, why am I bringing this recommendation when we did all kinds of materials adoption earlier in the summer? One of the, it's actually a good reason. When the business department went to order additional books for the additional enrollment in IB psychology, what we found out was that the book that they currently use is no longer in print and no longer available. So we needed to go back to the drawing board. Because we increased our numbers, last year we had 52 students that took IB psychology. This year, we have 129 students that are taking IB psychology. So that is a great increase in an upper level course that we're excited to see. However, the books were not available and they were no longer in print, so we had to go back to the drawing board. We looked at other available titles that are out there, other books that were recommended by IB. Our teacher that teaches that, as well as our administrators reviewed that. And we're bringing, the book is actually titled IB Psychology for your approval for recommendation.
Thank you. May I get a recommendation?
So move.
Second? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Discussion. Mr. Phillips?
Well, first of all, I'm delighted to have the problem, seeing the number of kids double in this IB program. I think that's just terrific. I'd love to know what kind of Kool-Aid you've been serving them. And then it looks as though this is a slam dunk as far as, I mean, the title is IB psychology, so there's no room for second guessing to professionals here, so it sounds like a good deal.
Thank you. I do have one question. When you're adopting IB program materials, is it on a six-year cycle or it's just as needed? And is this a book that we're going to have some longevity that we'll be able to use it in the upcoming years?
Good question. Some of them are on a six-year cycle, however, it's when we bring on the new courses. In this, this title is actually consumable so that we will not need to worry about paying for it through the next six years. It's the, it's a consumable that the students pay for upfront and then they keep the book.
Thank you. Any, yes, Mrs. Freed?
Do we offer IB psychology at the higher level or the standard level?
The IB psychology is at the standard level. And it's a full-year course.
Okay, just for people like me, what would be the difference between the two, the standard level and the higher level?
There's, in IB, there's two different levels. Some of the standard level and higher level, some of them go for the IB diploma. But there is a very specific curriculum and you need so many higher level courses in order to receive that IB diploma.
Okay.
All of the courses, standard level and higher level, all of them are weighted courses at the high school level because they're all higher level courses. However, it's just the way IB defines them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just as a benefit, I just happen to pull up Butler University's IB place. So if they take IB psychology higher level and score five or seven on the exam, they can test out a five credit hours of the psychology at 100 electives. And if it's standard level, they can get three hours of the psychology 100 level elective. So just, that's what they're shooting for.
Of course, absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions? Great, okay. All in favor of supporting the adoption of the IB psychology book for the new, for the current program? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Dudley, to you for rental materials and fee changes.
Yes, thank you. This evening, I bring to you the materials rental and fee changes for all of our courses. As I mentioned earlier, we did, over the spring and summer, we brought to you several new materials for adoption, including our literacy, business, family and consumer science, and also some other various courses that were brand new to us that we're adding. So the spreadsheet that you have reflects those changes. Also, as you will recall, Mr. McMichael and myself brought to you a proposal as a discussion item at our last meeting to talk about the elementary fees in particular as far as keeping them at not increasing more than 5%. And so that was that, there's that discussion down below to remind you of that discussion. And in addition to the elementary fees, we are also, this is not included in the textbook rental, but it's a supply fee, the supply fee for our elementary students in grades one through five. We've included that supply fee for kindergarten for many years and now we're incorporating that into one through five. So I bring this to you for recommendation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. May I get a motion?
I will move to, oh, I accept the material rental and fee changes as presented on the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Freed. Discussion. Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to see some kind of a report at the end of the year as to how well the supply, the parents accepted the supply fees and how well it went and how, how it worked with the teachers, just to see how the program went, to see if we should continue it to next year.
Okay. Any other, yes, Mr. Phillips?
That was exactly the thought that was going through my mind, Pam. I, I think that this is probably a good idea and, you know, but it never hurts to take a good, hard look at the end of a period of time just to make sure and then change course if necessary.
Any other questions or comments? Wonderful, okay. Ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving right along to Dr. Wall.
Thank you. The, let me put. Just pull it up, it'll go. It's thinking, there we go. Thanks, Dana. The, as presented last meeting, we looked at draft goals report and that report's a culmination of sitting down and listening and spending extremely productive and satisfying time at all 15 schools last year, as well as community engaged invitation from all past members of expedition, last two years of coordinating council. Includes sitting and spending a goal-setting workshop with the district leadership team, which is over 60 of our leaders in the building. Opportunity to sit with the ESC as well, so it's really our 16th building, and listen to the faculty and staff of ESC, as well as student advisory. So it's really exciting to get this planning and evaluation cycle into full cycle. You know, as mentioned last year, there were some things, the timing of it, it couldn't, it couldn't result in the community and stakeholder engaged fashion that I believe truly is the meaningful way to do this, these kind of things with people as opposed to them. And that's what's exciting about the report, that it's a culmination of that and there's feedback in that. And obviously, as I told other groups, we can't do everything that is suggested and everyone understands that. But clearly themes emerged, as well as with the Board of Education, themes emerged. And those themes can then be encapsulated in suggested actions or continued actions from last year. And again, in any cycle, as we all know, some things continue. And that's, I think that's a healthy, a healthy thing to do. And as well as- And as well as the annual planning and evaluation cycle that is part of this report, as well as the communication expectations, which again, to be redundant on that, models a way to have civil discourse in a way that is meaningful, I think representative Carmel Clay School Community, and a tremendous role model for like the students that were here tonight and our community members. So again, high commendations to the board for that. The draft details in here, if I didn't capture the essence of some of the suggestions last meeting, please let me know. But I suggest we act on this, and the district leadership team is ready to roll up their sleeves and continue, continue the good work and start some new initiatives as well. So it's exciting.
Thank you, Dr. Wall. So now we have this as an action item, very excited. So may I get a motion on the table? Yes.
I'll move to approve the 2014-15 district goals, communication expectations, annual planning, and evaluation cycle has been discussed thoroughly two weeks ago and is on the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Is that your discussion? Okay, discussion. Mr. Phillips?
I can't tell you how very pleased I am that the district has matured to this point where we are proactively and thoughtfully trying to move forward in a very systematic and reasonable fashion. This is a tremendous advance in just the past few years. So you have our appreciation, Dr. Wall.
Thank you.
Mrs. Freed?
Well, I'm pretty down-to-earth, and what I love about this goal-setting process is how they are so goal-set on what we're working about, people of education. I mean, they're not lofty goals, we're up there with all this language that people don't understand. They're, this is what we need to do, and I appreciate the process. I think it's great.
Thank you.
Other? My only comment is that I was very pleased how you worked through last year's goals, recognizing that there was a timeline, and that you could not possibly get everything done at one, you know, within two months, and that it is a process, and that this will carry over. And we do have some of our goals that continue to carry over. And I like that we have retained the student-centered communication finance, our goal umbrellas, and then we have our subset of action items. I think that is very well thought process, and I appreciate it. Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Very well said.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, moving ahead to discussion. First discussion item goes to Mrs. Niles.
Yes, I'm bringing tonight legislative priorities. I realize that I didn't do this in the 13-14 school year, and I apologize for that, but I think we were kind of involved in a lot of other things
We had a lot on our
last year. So this is being, this being a long session, I thought that this would be a good time to have legislative priorities reestablished. And I worked off of the prior legislative priorities. And looking at those, decided what, as we've talked as a board, where our priorities lie, and asked for input from the board members. And so what we have here on the, on the agenda is my original proposal for our legislative agenda. And then today, I talked to Julie Slavens, who's the attorney for ISBA, and talked to her about a couple of legislative resolutions that are coming across for the Indiana School Board Association Fall Conference, of which I am the delegate. And so I get the information, because I will be voting on those. So there were a couple that I had questions on, and as we talked about those, they seemed to be in line with what we are doing right now, and I thought they would be good to add to our priorities. So I had to take out some language that was currently listed in what we have here in order to achieve one page, because we are doing one page of priorities, and on the back, we're doing the fact sheet.
The district profile?
The district profile, which looks like that. So we'll be putting that on the back of the legislative priorities. So then, when the legislators receive this information, they'll have all of our, our information together. So the three that I added, I added something under high-performing school district, and the reason I added that is because I wanted it to better align with our goals, since we have a goal on high-performing school district. So I added that to, to number three, where it was, says and would allow for schools to expand student opportunities. So that's new language. Then four, five, and six, these are new, so I'm going to read those. "The state should amend the teacher dismissal law to correct the requirement that the principal has to make the preliminary decision to dismiss other administrators as well as the superintendent. This is due to the current definition at the state level of what constitutes a teacher." Under the definition of teacher, it lists all administrators, and it lists the superintendent as, in that definition. So under the state law, it says that a principal will sign the letter to dismiss the teacher in the teacher's contract. So because it's very unclear as to who a teacher is, it can be the superintendent. So ISBA had talked to them, they, this was under Tony Bennett. He had a bunch of things going on at that time, didn't bring anything to ISBA to have them look it over prior to this going through the legislature. And after, after the fact, they all said, oh, yes, this should have been done, but, but then the legislature had no interest in it. So now we're, we're still pursuing this. Number five, "It is important that the teacher dismissal law, which is chapter seven, be consistent in its language by bringing up-to-date the language on the suspension of a teacher without pay," which is chapter nine. Apparently, when chapter seven was reformed in 2011, it did not include the suspension of a teacher without pay, because that was back in chapter nine. So they didn't pull that out of chapter nine and put it into chapter seven. So now, suspension of a teacher is under the old language, and they want it to be consistent with the new language, which is the 2011 reform. So I thought that that would be something that we should put in our legislative priorities. And then number six, "Because measuring student achievement is so important, the state accountability model should be clear, definable, and accurate, and does not present significant questions about its reliability and validity." And I know that this has come into question right now because of the new I-Step, all the stuff that's going down at DOE, IDOE. So I thought that would be consistent with that as well. So those are the three new ones that I have added. So any additions, corrections, or questions?
I had some comments. Thanks, Pam, for doing this. I think, not I think, I think we all know that when we did this in the past, we got great feedback from a variety of people. And actually, Dr. Wall and I were somewhere this past weekend, another board member from a different district was very interested in getting this updated, which just shows how, you know, this can spread, and we can all work together. So I like that. Thank you for sending out kind of an updated version this afternoon with a couple of additions that you just mentioned. And though maybe your intent was to fit it all on one page, I fully support the more concise, tightened, and clarified language. I think that's, you know, anything you read about trying to catch someone's attention, sometimes you have five seconds, or three seconds, or 10 seconds, and the more to the point we can get, the more luck is on our side, I guess. So very glad about that concise, clear language. I did have a couple of questions, I guess, or suggestions. One is just really for the board to think about, I suppose. One A, we often here in the district use the term "third from the bottom of the list" when we refer to our school funding, but I don't know if a legislator who deals with education and a variety of other issues relates to it that way. So one thought that I had is if we change the wording of that, the first sentence of one A to say Carmel Clay Schools currently receives the third lowest operational funding in Indiana, and they continue on, and it is presently a growing school district, the state needs to continue to address the discrepancy in per-pupil funding between districts. That's just one thought there.
Could you restate that, Tricia?
Carmel Clay Schools currently receives the third lowest operational funding in Indiana. So food for thought there.
I would probably restate that just a little
Oh, that's, that's fine, discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, just, yeah, the better we can get the language, the more concise, I think that's, and more clear, clarity, that's great. Another question I have, and I bring this up because in the past, others have brought this up to me, and so whoever's listening, I think maybe we can clarify. On number two, we're talking about school corporations being afforded the flexibility for some decisions to be district-level, to be locally made, because we, just as our state legislators don't like the federal government dictating everything to them, we appreciate having some say when we have, you know, our hands on the pulse a little bit more. But what people have brought up to me to clarify in the past is E there, student contact time. I wondered if you could just talk a little bit about that, or if there's a better way to describe that in our priorities.
Student contact time would be the time, obviously, with students, not including lunch, recess, and things of those, of that nature. That would be time in class with students.
So instructional time, or teacher-student time, or something like that?
Maybe instruction. Because it, well, and it does list in the state how long a student has to be in the school building, in the elementaries, and how long they have to be in the buildings in the secondary. That is in the state law.
In the state law, does it, is it referenced as instructional time? Is it, how is that referenced? Do you know?
No, that's the student day. It's referenced as the student day.
Okay.
So the student elementary day is five and a half, and, isn't it five, or is it six? Five? And the high school day is six.
That doesn't determine
That doesn't mean that's what we do, but that's what's listed as
The minimum. But that's the date, does that include, is that class time? That's supposed to be class time? Or is it just in the school building?
That's student, in-the-building time.
Is that, is it lunch? No. So that's instructional time? Okay.
So my thought there, maybe that's instructional time, something, if others in the past have brought that up, is it's not clear, clear to them, then possibly we'd have legislators or people who are communicating with it, that we can come up with a better phrasing so we can get our point across. Something to think about. And then just finally, and I had put this in an email, Dr. Wall had brought up at different times, a concern on how do we get more instructional time? How do we get more time with our kids? And to really look at tests that either, standardized testing, so the time that the kids are taking testing as opposed to instructional time. And if that is a problem as far as state mandated tests, does that rise to the level of a legislative priority of ours? Or is that more of a problem, maybe not problem, a difficulty in our own CCS assessments, and that that would be addressed when we come up with our own student growth model, like the W, NWEA, or one of those, if that's more of a, a district glass we're looking through there? Thoughts on that?
I would say that it's both, because the state accountability model still hasn't come out yet, and we're still waiting to see what they're, what they're going to do. They are talking about going to a growth model. And if they go to a growth model, how many times are they going to have to take the test? Is it going to be all on the computer? There's a lot of if's out there right now. As to this district, I think we've already done a good job of looking at our testing and have, as Dr. Wall has stated prior to today, that the student testing has been limited, and we've purged as well as added, so that we are trying to help the teachers in the classroom.
But I think it was both, and I think last year, we did a review, and we said we wouldn't, we would not add any standardized testing unless we purged, which we did, and significantly more than we, frankly, I anticipated, which is great.
Yeah.
And shared that with the Association of Discussion for K-5 getting NWEA implemented. But as far as the state mandated testing, that takes a significant amount of instructional time, and we would definitely like to see some continuity with that. And I think the new one on seven, the state accountability model
Number six?
I'm sorry, six.
Are you adding one?
Six that you just, I actually did, and then I said six is actually, if we could put it in there maybe, because that, if that state accountability model, you know, we want that to be streamlined, we want it to be meaningful, understandable, and not so time-consuming as we have now. Preserve instructional time. So maybe there could wordsmith that into six. I think that's a valuable priority.
Yeah.
The state mandated, draw their attention to that.
And that would be, I like that idea of working it into six to keep, because they are so related there.
I mean, it's, and that's ISB's suggestion too, right, Pam? Number six, yeah.
Yeah.
That concludes my comments.
Yes, Mrs. Freed?
And I'm not an English person by any stretch, and Pam knows that, but is, to make site-based decisions at the local level, is that redundant? I mean, if it's a size-based decision, isn't it here? Or is that, and number two, to make site-based decisions at the local level?
Number two, yes.
That's where, I mean, basically, we want to be able to be able to provide instruction to our students in the way that we see best fits our local needs.
Right, but they can also make site-based decisions at the state level, and which determine what you're, what you're going to do. So we don't want them to do that, we want to be able to make our own decisions. That's the way I, I interpret this. If not, let me know.
So Kathy, are you suggesting school corporations should be afforded the flexibility to make decisions at the local level?
Yeah, the decisions that, that will provide the best educational opportunities for our students. And, and all of those things that are listed go into providing education for our, our students. Calendar, professional development, health insurance, well, maybe not the health insurance.
I don't know, I'll think about it.
Think about it.
Okay. Let me think about it.
I'll think about a better suggestion.
Pam, do you have any questions for the rest of us with related to some of the feedback you'd received to document notes as you rethink these ideas? you'd received to document notes as you rethink these ideas?
No.
Okay.
I've, I think I've got an idea of what is being suggested, and I will send that out to everybody before final approval at the next meeting.
That sounds great. Thank you. Other questions before I move along? Yes, Mr. Phillips?
It's a thought that, that I've had repeatedly, that, you know, on that question about equitable funding between districts, and the fact that we receive so little as compared to others. Well, there, there's a natural rejoinder to, to our position on that, which is that, well, certain kids require more resource to educate, because of that, what is it?
The funding formula?
There's an index.
Complexity index. Complexity.
So, I, I think it would be good to, you know, think through our rejoinder to that, something such as, even, even the best and most motivated kids can't be educated for free. You know, there, there is a certain base level of resources required to, to, to do a good job as a school district.
Maybe I'll add something about the complexity index.
I, I think that would be good, because if we don't address that, then that, there will, there will be that objection, that'll be unanswered.
Okay.
In that one A, if you could include per pupil funding.
That's what it said, right?
At the end, if we do it in the, it depends on how you do that first sentence.
No, it says the state needs to continue to address the discrepancy in per pupil funding between districts.
Right, but when we state we're the bottom, third from the, however, we're the third lowest operational funding per pupil, I don't know if we need to be redundant on that.
Specific.
It's the per pupil funding that is the driver on the general fund.
Oh, yeah.
Pam, thank you for putting in all the work and effort in contacting ISPA and, and getting us on the right page as we move ahead with our legislative priorities.
You're welcome.
Moving right along, we have a number of first readings for policies that are either being added as new policies, addressing antiquated language, or just eliminating policies altogether. They were available to all of us for a couple of weeks now, online on our Google site, and we'll begin with policy 2262, the Latchkey Program. And I'm not going to read each and every one of these, but we will just, one by one, if there's discussions for each of them, please share your comments, and we'll take those under consideration. So, 2262, the Latchkey Program. Discussion?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
Just a, a question as to the insurance liability limits. How, how did we settle on the particular figures that we've got?
We consulted with our insurance agent.
I'm sorry?
We, we consulted with our insurance agent to, and got, got their recommendation on what they felt they should be.
Okay, so you're, you're persuaded that, that that's a sufficiently high limit?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving right along. 2440, summer school. Any questions? Excellent. Moving right along. 2460, first reading, child find, and special education. Questions?
Question?
Yes.
And it kind of encompasses a couple here, but 2460, 2460.01, and 2460.03 are all being suggested to delete because it just repeats language, basically, in the special education rules, title 511, Article 7, in the Indiana Code. And I guess my question just goes to the policy committee. Then if you go down a couple to, number eight, yeah, the copyrighted materials, 2531, and that, the suggestion there, the recommendation of the policy committee was more of a restatement or clarification of Indiana Code, and so I was curious on what the policy committee's thought was, kind of along that process.
And with that, we're going to refer to Dr. Dudley. We've had a discussion about this, and we felt like she would be best to address it.
The three policies that you first stated, the ones that have to do with special education law, when we look at Article 7, and we look at when that is recodified in law, there's, in Article 7, there's not only the policy, but then there's a lot of the specific guidelines that we have to follow. But as that changes, we want to make sure that we're up to date on those changes. With the copyright one, as you can see, back from 1976, that doesn't necessarily change in, in the law as per se, it's more that we just have expectations that our staff does follow the copyright law.
Okay.
But the Article 7 one is quite lengthy, but we're required to follow those anyway, but we want to make sure that we're always up to date and current.
And I do know those mandates do change way too often. Okay, thanks, appreciate that.
Whoops, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. I, I guess I have a question that's similar to what I think Tricia has asked about Article 7, special education, title 511, and so forth. Hey, if I understand correctly, we're, what we're proposing here is to, to delete both the policy and the administrative guideline, is that correct?
Yes.
No, not necessarily.
No.
Did I, did I misunderstand?
We are just responsible for the policy. The administrative guidelines are not being eliminated. The guidelines, you do not have to have a policy to have administrative guidelines.
That's true.
And we have a number of administrative guidelines that do not align to a specific policy. It's just, they're just there.
And in this case, we would have our guidelines continue to follow the ever-meandering trail of Article 7. So, we'd still need to follow the law. Our guidelines could then change to follow that law, and would. Does that make sense?
Okay, so we're, we're removing the middleman, if you will, the board policy. So we'll have administrative guidelines which will faithfully reflect the provisions of 511, Article 7, and so forth. Okay. Well, that's good, because I, I had a concern that we might be eliminating both policy and guideline, which would leave our poor employees with the task of reading 143 pages' worth of legislation, which would be cruel.
No, and then I was hoping, Amy, could you address, at every IEP meeting, which those who are reserving any type of services have, they carry an individual education plan, they receive a booklet. Could you define what that booklet encompasses?
Yes. That booklet actually encompasses all of Article 7. It encompasses all of the rules and regulations for special ed, the parents' rights and responsibilities that they receive, so the parents understand what their rights are per the law, and, and they also are educated at any of those meetings where, if they, if the parents have questions specifically to their rights, or to their child's rights, they can ask those questions at that meeting. And it's offered each time we do anything with an IEP that is, if we mail a copy of it before the meeting, that's included. At all of the meetings, it's always offered. Many times, parents decline the offer because they have multiple copies, but it's always offered to them, and it's always offered to, explain it to them as well.
Mrs. Freed?
This is a very basic level, but as we delete these policies, we certainly have a policy somewhere that says we will follow the law.
Yeah, and we do, and regardless of what our policy says, the law will always win out.
I do have one other question. Do we have, and I've not ever looked for it, so I don't know, but do we have linked somewhere on our website, Article 7?
I do believe we do have that. I will look for it as well. I do believe it is linked in one of our webpages, but if not, we can certainly do that, but I believe we do have it.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Mr. Phillips?
This may be just a philosophical thing, and I certainly understand that the law is the law, and we don't have the ability to add or subtract from whatever the legislation is, but, but, basic board governance suggests that we, we hold our, our superintendent accountable for, for certain things, and the way we, we map out what he's accountable for is through policy, I, I think. So, if we, if we have an area, and I'm not referring specifically to, to this special education area, but if there's an area where we need to hold our superintendent accountable for carrying out the necessary provisions of the law, I would think we'd have to have at least a broad policy that, that would address that.
Greg, if you want to pause a moment, let us take a look. I am pretty certain that we have under our expectations in our bylaws, as well as our policy on superintendent behavior, on what he's to follow. If we look into 1000s, and we can all just take a moment and look for that now, we can look and see how we define the responsibilities of our superintendent. We do.
I guess I'll, I'll just ask to extend that thought to the copyright policy which is coming up. I imagine that the school board, as the governing body, has certain responsibilities under the law. And we can suffer certain liabilities too, if we don't acquit ourselves of the things that we're legally required to do. So, if we have an employee who violates copyright law, is the school board without any, any liability in that situation? If we don't have a policy that instructs our employees on how to properly follow the law?
I don't really have an answer for that. I'd have to consult our attorney.
I don't know how they would, because again, if, if someone breaks the law, our policy is not going to, that wouldn't be an excuse for them not to follow the law.
Well, I, I guess an example of, of, let's say, breaking the law, copyright law might be if a, a teacher is copying some instructional materials for use in the classroom, and the material happens to be protected by copyright. So, I, I think it's fairly commonplace in these libraries to, to have notifications posted right there by the copy machine saying, you know, federal law prohibits the copying of copyrighted material.
We do, don't we?
And if our administrative guidelines were, were to instruct building principals to post such notifications, you know, plainly in view by copy machines, I would think that would be a prudent step that we, as a corporation, might want to take.
Right.
But to simply say that every employee is responsible on their own to understand the fine nuances of copyright law, I, I don't know. I'm just not sure that we've done everything that we need to do as a corporation to help our employees to understand.
Greg, if you want to pause for one moment, because we do that, and I'll let the administration speak to your comment about posting.
In addition to this policy that they're proposing for the first reading, for changes, we also have the acceptable use policy, that all of our employees are educated on when they are hired, and they all need to sign this policy, that they will use, use materials in an acceptable way. This includes technology, but it also includes printed materials, making sure that they understand what the copyright law is, and that is a policy that I believe Mr. Newman, when he, or, does an orientation for new staff, he shares that with them, and all staff members do have to sign that acceptable use, as well as our students as well.
I, I think that's wonderful. And I, I think I'm understanding that it's not necessary for the board to require that that happen.
Well, I do want to speak to one other thing, having, being in Smokey Rowan, making copies and what have you, above the, you know, the
Copy machine?
Copy machine, but there's a big cork board, and posted on there, laminated, is the copyright law. Now, I do not know, since I've not been in all the schools, if that is a standard. We will have the administration check into that, but I do know that is standard. It's Smokey Rowan, it is posted.
I feel good about that.
We also have policy 1230, and it says, the superintendent shall coordinate and supervise all the administrative services. She, he shall have general oversight over the school system, be responsible for the efficient operation of the total educational program, and she, he shall exercise those duties which are designated by the administrative guidelines of the school corporation, as well as those mandated by statutes. So, he's responsible.
Yes, we edit in Part C too, with federal.
Yep.
I was just brought it up as a point.
So, policy 1230.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving right along, let's pop to the next. We have policy 2460.01, and we basically just discussed that one.
Yes, we did. And the next one.
Oh, oh, just to backtrack on the previous one, the surrogate parenting, that bylaw, the administrative guideline in blue at the bottom, that retains. We are not eliminating the guideline. We were only eliminating the policy.
It's in blue. See it?
You see, where I got off on that, Mrs. Vanenburg, was looking at 2460.01, where it says in red letters, that the administrative guidelines will, will be deleted as well.
Where do we, okay, hold on. That's all three. Pardon me?
Oh.
01.
But we've got it in blue that we're going to be retaining that.
Okay.
When I saw that, I could just imagine our, our district plunging into the desk.
Well, that's a good point for discussion. Dr. Dudley, will you take a look at that for discussion? And Greg, we'll get back to you, well, I'll get back to the entire board, once Dr. Dudley takes a look.
And I, and I don't believe, I will review that. I do not believe we are deleting the guideline, because in Article 7, it says we have to have those guidelines.
Okay. Okay.
That was where the confusion came from.
If you hadn't put it in red, I wouldn't have seen it.
So, I'm, I'm, I'm moving along to a new one. All right. Policy 2464, programs for high-ability students.
Extended school year.
Extended school year was part of another article.
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry.
Just mention.
2460.03, which per statute, the corporation must comply with the law, and there are no administrative guidelines that align with that. It is the extended school year for disabled students, which is the law. So, we're jumping to 2464, programs for high-ability students. Any comments? Okay. Moving along to the next policy, 2531, copyrighted materials. Next, 2605, program accountability. Any questions with regard to program accountability? Policy 2610, evaluation of the instructional programs. Comments? Comments? Okay, next. Oh, the budget. Mr. McMichael.
As Rogers pulling it up, I just wanted to share with the board, we're going to be meeting for policy. So if you have any other questions or concerns that pop up in the meantime, before our next meeting, well, actually before our next board meeting, at our workshop, we'll be voting on these in September, the end of September. So in the meantime, questions, concerns, send them our way. We will get back to you ASAP with regards to the link and administrative guidelines for 2460.01, Surrogate Parents.
Okay. Let me begin by noting that when we talk about our budget, oftentimes, the general public, at least, thinks it's a budget, which it is, but we actually have six different funds, each of which has a budget. And within these funds, these monies cannot be commingled. We sometimes get questioned about why we can be doing construction projects but don't have enough money to hire as much staff as we want. In part, the answer is, is that in Indiana, it's called fund accounting, but in this state, monies are categorized by funds, and a significant fact is, is that the money within these funds cannot be commingled. So we start with our general fund, which is our general operating fund. That's certainly the largest fund that we have. That's the one fund that is funded now by state revenues, and the board administration have had a lot of discussion about that. But that's important to note, that that fund is coming from state revenues, which is principally sales tax and income tax. So about the time that... In past years, the general fund was funded partially by state funds and also by local property tax or local levy. And as luck would have it, soon after that law was changed to fund the general fund entirely from state revenue, we had the 100-year recession, which certainly had an impact on the amount of sales tax and income tax that was available. And we've been talking about that ever since this change was made. And Carmel, we're one of, I believe, 16 school districts that have a referendum fund. That, again, is local funds with primarily property tax. And then our transportation fund is used, of course, as the name implies, for major expenses associated with transportation, except for the buses. And the buses are... The purchase of buses and replacement of buses is in a separate fund. And then our debt service fund is used to repay debt incurred by the school corporation, most of which is for facility construction or repair. And then finally, our capital projects fund, which also is used for construction, repair buildings, and land acquisition, but also used to purchase and maintain equipment. The most significant of which would be, an example would be, technology. Virtually all of our technology comes from this fund, except when we do have a bond issue and are building a new building, we would also buy technology through those funds. So I'll start with the general fund and with the revenue. Our revenues for the general fund are driven by a state formula. This year, I've assumed an increase of 100 students. That's significant, because we receive about $5,300 or so per student, and so you can do the math, if we receive... If our enrollment increases 100 students, then that has, you know, significant financial impact, just because of the growth. In fact, if it weren't for the growth, we would receive very little increased additional funding, certainly not adequate to maintain the programs and the structure that we have. Again, then locally, with our referendum fund, we're projecting about $380,000 of increased revenue for that. Now, that's in a context of about $14 million in total, but still, it's an increase, which is something that there was a couple of years where we actually experienced a decrease. So we're headed back in a more positive direction at this point. With regard to expenditures, our salary expenses are based on, and reflect, and the budget reflects, a 1% salary increase for Step 1 of our schedules, and also the top step, as well as... It also includes an anticipated increment for 2014 and 15. I've noted no increases for 2015 and 16, not so much because I think that I'm really not making an opinion as to what might happen in the fall of 15, 16, but by then, we will have, it's one, it's another bargaining session with our teachers' association, also, though, we will have a new school funding formula. So rather than me try to guess the outcome of all of that, I generally just take the approach that I assume no impact, and then I... It kind of neutralizes whatever might happen in that respect, because I'm also assuming the same funding. So basically, the costs aren't assumed to go up, and the revenue's not assumed to go up. And then also, where it's for eligible employees, it assumes a 2% performance bonus. All of this is... The board's already taken action with all of our employees, except teachers, and that's because we will soon start the process of negotiating a new contract for our teachers. And it's worth emphasizing that I'm not trying to predetermine the outcome of bargaining, I'm simply applying the same, for funding purposes, how that would impact our budget. So, again, I certainly don't know... In other words, this reflects a financial impact to the budget. What the outcome of bargaining may be, I would have no idea. Whether it's this amount of financial impact, or certainly whether it's, you know, that money might be spent in this fashion. So I wanted to emphasize that, because obviously, it defeats the whole purpose, and it would be illegal if we were to try to predetermine what the outcome of that process is.
Greg, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, though, for expenditures, you are hypothetically basing our expenditures as if everybody in the district, all employee groups.
Yeah. Yes, that basically, every salary schedule received a 1% increase at the top and 1% at the bottom, and that there was this 2% performance grant. Now, we do know, in the case of teachers, that there's a performance award grant this year, and it's more than coincidental that that amount has been estimated at 2%. And in that case, it's, you know, the law states specifically that it's to be used for cash awards for teachers and so forth. So it's pretty specific in terms... In other words, we can't just take the money and just kind of spend it any way you want to. It's what I call categorical funding, or certainly targeted funding, as to how that money will be used. Yes?
I have to confess, even though I'm not a financial guy, and certainly not, but if this were just, you know, me and my family trying to project a budget for the coming year, we'd be making some reasonable guesses as to what things might be. Not to say that we're going to dictate the future.
Right.
But, you know, to project a 0% increase for that second year?
Well, also projecting, or not assuming any increase in revenue. Now, what's more likely is, is that in the fall, when we receive, or the next biennium, when there's a new school funding formula, hopefully at least, we certainly would expect that there would be some increase in revenue. But right now, I'm not assuming that. And correspondingly, that there may be some increase in personnel cost or salaries.
I think I understand better now.
Yeah.
You're really keeping those two variables tied together.
Tied together, and somewhat, pretty much, neutralizing them. Because if I were to choose and pick a number on increased revenue, if I did anything other than assume that the salaries equaled that amount, then again, I can make that picture look as good or as bad as anybody would want. I could assume a lot of revenue and very little increase in salary, which would make our cash balance look really good, if that actually happened. Or I could reverse the process and get real pessimistic and assume that the salaries are going to be really high, and the revenue wouldn't be there to support it. So that just, I think, distracts and leads us into a whole other discussion that I don't know is necessary nor appropriate here. Because in the end, we're going to get whatever we get from the formula, and at least with our teaching staff, the expense side of it's going to be a result of the collective bargaining process. And I don't have any idea what the outcome of either one of those would be, so.
Thank you.
Going back one page.
Mm-hmm.
You have the ADM increase of 100 students. What, at this point, is our per pupil funding?
I thought you were going to ask what our enrollment was at this point, which I'm a lot more aware of than the per pupil funding. But the fundings around numbers would be about $5,500 a student.
Okay. And my other question is, the term increment?
Yes.
We're really not moving incrementally up the scale anymore? So is there a new term that we should be using?
Maybe, but number one, with half of our staff, it's okay to use increment. With our classified staff, and with, relative to our certified staff, our instructional staff, we're not permitted to have a step increase or an increment based on years of experience. I don't know that it's... We're prohibited from having an increment, it's just the definition of that's changed, and that it's, to the extent you have one, because we do. But it's not based on years of experience, it's based on years of... I think we can call it pretty much whatever we want, as long as we don't give salary increases based on experience. You agree with that, Brad? Yeah. There you go.
I have one question. If you could remind me, the money that the legislature has put aside, or said is for performance money, I forgot the term.
Yeah.
Is that for those that... Is that for any staff, or is that to be used only for those that are...
Teachers.
Teachers, yeah.
There's actually some... There's some discussion about that. The statute... First of all, it's about $30 million across the state. And there were projections made by legislative service agencies, and this is based on, in part, if not totally, based on student performance and so forth, so we're a high-performing school district, so we're going to get a rather enviable amount of money as compared to, you know, a lot of other school districts. The estimate for Carmel was, within that $30 million, was about $1.1 million. And the statute says it'll be used for, quote, "cash awards," unquote, for eligible teachers, which means they clearly, they have to be effective or better, because we know we can't give any kind of increase if you're less than effective. That then led to some conversation about who's a teacher, you know, superintendent and so forth. And so it's not as obvious as might seem, to the extent that most of us hold, have a teaching license and a contract backed up by that. Our intent would be to define teachers as employees covered under the collective bargaining agreement. We have no intent to take a position that, you know, some of those funds would go to principals or anybody else, other than those covered under the collective bargaining agreement.
Is that something that you see might be clarified at the state level?
Well, somebody will clarify it. I don't know who gets to decide who's right, however, you know how that all works.
Fair enough, yeah.
But we don't see that as something that we ought to, you know, go down that path, and we feel that the funds are intended for what we understand to be, you know, employees covered under the collective bargaining agreement, and that's how we would intend to approach it. Okay. With regard to benefits, we know that we have had no premium increase for the second year in a row, by the way, relative to our health insurance. So for 2014, 15, really from October on, there's no increase. Here, I did assume a 5% increase for 2015 and 16, and also a contribution to a health savings account of $1,000, if somebody taking a single, and $2,000 for the family, if they elect the high deductible. And so although the board has made those contributions to our classified staff, and our staff that's not covered under the collective bargaining agreement for the last, it'd be now, three years, because this was also approved recently, we still see this as a non-recurring expense, because unless you take action to do this, it's not a given, it's certainly not given that it's every year. And we're doing this to incentivize people to elect and try the high deductible plan, particularly now that we have our wellness center in place. Then, with regard to non-personnel expenses, things like property insurance, utilities, we're basing those on our best estimate based on trends and the information that's been made available to us. And then with regard to what I define as controllable costs, things like supply and travel, those are at the same level as they were for the 2014 budget. This then is some detail relative to the estimate of revenue, and I would point out to you that, and this is for the general fund and the referendum fund, I would point out the property tax, the first item there, that's the referendum fund, so it's $12.8 million for the levy portion of that, and then the excise tax is also going toward, into the referendum fund, almost $1.2 million. And so that revenue is significant. And then on the second page, you'll see the basic grant at $84.4 million, so that's the vast majority of the total revenue of $102 million. The others are things, everything from student fees, that's what I call in-and-out money. We collect the fees, spend the money, and... Or we have childcare, educare, childcare fees would be another example. And here, near the bottom, you can see the other state revenue, the $1.1 million estimate for the performance grant. Now, that isn't... Well, they're all estimates at this point, but that's what that's been estimated at. On the expenditure side, you can see that... Hold the screen still for a minute. You can see that we spend 94% of our general fund and referendum fund monies on salary and benefits. Given the type of operation that we are, that shouldn't be surprising. And so, again, this is based on the previous assumptions. And then you see purchased services, the balance of the money is spent on purchased services. A significant area there is utilities. Although we pay about $2.5 million of our utilities out of our capital fund, the balance is paid from the general fund, and any... And that money in the capital fund is frozen at that amount, so any increase to utilities, all the increase finds its way to the general fund or the referendum fund. And then we have less than 2% is spent on... And then, we have, less than 2% is spent on supplies and materials, and these numbers were estimated based on, they may change, because they're based on enrollment and so forth, but essentially based on last year's level, and then, just a very little of miscellaneous to get to 100% of our funding. Now, based on that, then, you can see that our January 1st cash balance was just over $11.3 million. We take out our projected revenues for the balance of 2014, and we're now projecting an ending balance of this year of nine point, almost $9.3 million. And that may be shocking at first, but it really shouldn't be, because, at least with the board, because you remember that in 2014, we kind of caught up. We got contracts settled, we, which went retroactive back to 1213 and 1314. And so, this was somewhat anticipated. There's a little bit, it's a little lower than what we might have assumed, you know, six or eight months ago, because there were some things, like the harsh winter, we really got, you know, spent more money on utilities than we might, and I'm, going forward, I'm not projecting, you know, that level of expense in utilities, although I heard yesterday that the Farmer's Almanac says it's going to be another harsh winter, so I'm kind of hoping they're wrong. But, nevertheless, so we had, you know, we had some negative factors last year in that respect, financially, as far as the severe weather, but overall, this is, this is not, you know, far off from what we've assumed, and we're really, as I said, we're really just catching up now, and we are caught up at this point. Then, you'll see here, at the reflection of this budget, drops that cash balance another $2 million, and we've discussed this before, and that's why, and we chose to reflect this and anticipate this, significantly in the area of the incentive with the health insurance, with the HSA contribution, but also, these are, most of this is, this decline is not expected to be recurring. There is some recurring, but the vast majority of it is, I'll say, planned, in the sense that we felt that we could afford to offer that HSA incentive, and they're also, it clearly benefits our employees, and I know the board is, wants to support its employees financially as best that you can, and I, really, that's what these numbers reflect. Now, having said all that, I'm not recommending that we kind of allow that operating balance to drop much below this. This puts it at about 7%. That's a little less than the minimum balance that most of state agencies would recommend, which is about 8%. We were up to over 10%. In part, though, that was because we hadn't, we hadn't given salary increases for a couple of years until we caught that up. But, one of the things that happens, if we get, if we get too low, it becomes necessary to make some pretty, pretty, very, I'll say, increasingly conservative financial decisions. And it's really just like at home, in that, that if you, if you have no savings account, you financially can't afford to take any financial risk, because, particularly in an operation that's 94% personnel, and, which means you're sending out payroll checks every two weeks. So, you can't afford to, you know, wonder, are you going to have a severe winter, or is there something else unforeseen going to happen, or? And so, it's important, I believe, to have, have an operating balance that allows you some ability to take some kind of financial risks, and what's always reflected there is, is the lower that gets, the more conservative you get, which, another way of saying that is, is, you know, nine times out of 10, you'll be, you'll look back and have been overly conservative, but you can't afford to go the other way. And so, by having a little, you know, some operating balance, you can make decisions that sometimes you'll be a little short, but you won't be so conservative that almost all the time, where you, almost all the time, you'll have excess money. Because, again, you can't afford to run out, so you're going to guess on the conservative side. So, but this is about as low as I would like to see us to go, and I certainly have, and many of you have experienced times when it's been a lot lower than this, and you know what I'm talking about in terms of, and then, your entire attention begins to be on finances instead of on kids. And, you know, we have to take care of all this, but I'm sure you'd rather focus more on children's programming and so forth than, than kind of constantly worrying about going broke, so. So, we do want to maintain some balance here. Yes?
Before my question, I just want to reflect back. I remember sitting with Joe Miller in his living room, concocting the idea of a 6% margin.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm very happy to see that we're above that mark.
Yes.
That was aspirational at the time.
Yeah, it was. It was.
I want to go back just a page or so, Roger, on that page about the supplies and materials. I see that the library AV periodicals, those seem to be trending downward. It looks like from 213 to 2014, there was about a, I'm guessing, maybe a 10% drop, and then our budget calls for a further slight reduction. Are library materials getting less expensive, or are we not investing in our libraries, or what's going on?
Could be a number of things. One is, is in 2013, you're looking at actual expenditures, and so, oftentimes, at the end of the year, you have encumbrances out there that haven't turned into expenditures yet, so you have outstanding purchase orders, for example, but those expenses aren't reflected in the actual expenditures for that year. So, that's certainly, that's probably the biggest thing you're seeing here. And then, with regard to 2014 to 2015, there's, it's really essentially the same number, it's 171,000, now it's 17980, so there was a very few dollars difference. Yeah. So, not quite sure what explains that $20, but essentially flatlined. So, whereas the expenditure item, it's really more a matter that, in one case, you're comparing a budget, in the other case, you're comparing actual expenditures in that particular 12 months.
So, we shouldn't be afraid that we're going to have barren shelves in our libraries?
No, I don't think so. No. I don't think so. Okay, so our next fund, and there's some similarities to all of these when it gets to personnel matters, but in our transportation fund, there's also a state formula for that, and so, we've estimated that, and as well as the excise tax and the financial institutions' tax. With regard to expenditures, it's, they're projected overall at a cost of about 1%. Our salary schedules are, have some differences, while they have, you know, most are all have step increases, the steps aren't all the same. And bus drivers, for example, the step is like, first of all, they're paid by the day rather than by the hour, and then, for their regular routes, and those step increases are fairly minimal at about, at a dollar a year, a dollar each step. And then, the non-personnel expenses, again, are based on the various trends and things like fuel, oil, and gasoline, or gas and diesel fuel. In transportation, you'll see, our operating balance is declining, and that is, that is concerning to me, and should be to you as well. You can see it's, you know, we started the year at about 300,000, projected drop, you know, that going down to maybe 150, and then continuing to go down a bit to 85. I'm hopeful that, you know, we, again, have some conservatism built in, that our expenses may not be that great, and we may be able to improve that, but we are finding it necessary to look closely at our transportation expenses, because we have been trending in terms of our expenditures exceeding our revenue, so. Still, you know, not in any kind of crisis like some of our neighbors, fortunately for us, unfortunately for them. We're not having to provide heavy subsidies, or any subsidies really, to our transportation fund, from our general operating fund, as many districts are having to do. But, it is something that we've, we're watching closely.
Roger, you had mentioned that it's trending in the wrong direction.
Yep.
How long has that trend? I mean, I didn't think, I didn't have, so I couldn't look back at 13 and 12. How long has it been trending?
About two years. We anticipate dropping this year, and we dropped some last year, so. Now, we also did some things in terms of our salaries. We had, we had a, what we called a grandfathered step, and we eliminated that, and that cost a little money, and so, we anticipated some of that, but we're also feeling a need to really be very careful as to going forward. Also, what happens in transportation is, is there's some, it's almost like students in the sense that you get to a point where you have to, you have to add another bus and another driver and so forth, and then, when you do that, you now kind of have some capacity, and so, you can go for a while, and if you add a student, you don't necessarily have to add a bus. And so, so the expenditures are a little bit like that, in that they're, they can be more periodical, and they don't, they don't trend exactly in line with the enrollment. Also, of course, depends where kids move in and out of, and how that relates to the efficiency of the system. So, there's, it's not as simplistic as sometimes as some of the numbers here, and when you put it in context of, you know, it is about a $9 million operation, and a couple hundred buses, and so, all those things matter. Fuel costs, as you know, has varied over the last few years. Sometimes it's been up, and sometimes it's been down, and so, all that is an influence on the operation. And the bus replacement fund, it's pretty straightforward. We have a 10-year plan, as required by statute, and then, there's local levy that supports this replacement of buses, and they're on a, they're on a 12-year cycle. And likewise, this shows actually a little gain in the, which happens in the bus replacement fund, not huge amounts, but this is not a fund that we, we are concerned about in terms of coming up short of money. And in debt service, pretty straightforward. We have a total of five debt obligations, the most recent of which was the general obligation bonds, they're at the bottom, they're short-term bonds for three years. We also refinanced a bond issue, showing it being issued and, or reissued, really, and refinanced in June of 2014. And again, now here, you're seeing the operating balance only going to $9.6 million. It probably won't be that high. This is reflected here, because we're permitted to carry up to a six-month operating balance in debt service. So, we will, we're projecting, we're laying it out this way, in the end, we will, we will look at that operating balance, and that's, that's an area where, when we see what the tax rates are coming in, we likely will adjust this, so it's one of the ways we have some ability to kind of manage our tax rate, and at least within that six months. So, there's, it's a positive for us to have the cash here at some level, and some of you recall, in the past, we've actually used some of this cash for unforeseen shortfalls and so forth, most of which, the state has changed the statute to make those not acceptable anymore, but also just for cash flow. And so, we'll likely have some operating balance, but it likely will not be this amount. This is, again, the amount that's reflected as to what we could have. Yes?
Again, I want to just get back a couple of pages, Roger. Thinking about the buses, a couple of things come to mind. One, the district received a very impressive award for its green initiatives. Do we have some opportunities, looking down the road, as we change our fleet, you know, gradually, over time, to become perhaps more fuel-efficient? Or are we already there?
Well, we're doing, we've done, we're doing some things. In fact, now that you've mentioned that, I'll share with you something that we're doing this year, but, but for a number of years, we have used E85 fuel, but this year, we bought a propane bus, or a bus that's fueled by propane. And if you were to go over here and buy our transportation lot, you'll see a big propane tank that, which we didn't pay for, that became part of the package, because they wanted to encourage us to try that bus, but, so we are, we are kind of, I'll say, you know, we're trying a bus that is fueled by propane, and so, that's an example of how, you know, we've not done that before, but we thought that it was time that we would buy one and see how it is. While it's fueled by propane, as far as like our mechanics and stuff, the mechanical parts of the bus are essentially the same, are very similar to our diesel-powered buses, so, it's, so, which was important, because we have diesel mechanics, and if it was like an electric vehicle or something, we wouldn't necessarily have anybody that knew how to maintain it. So, we're good in all those respects, so we thought it would be an opportunity for us to try the propane. And, of course, there was some, you know, certain amount, we did research, we didn't just do that on a whim. We spent some time, you know, analyzing that and talking to other people and so forth, so.
Yeah, the other question I've had, Roger, about buses, some years ago, we, as a district, decided to eliminate walk zones.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm going to guess that that resulted in an increase to our transportation expenses.
It did.
Do you have a feel for roughly how great that increase was?
I believe it translated to about 10 more buses, which probably is in the neighborhood of $400,000 a year, thereabouts.
So, then, the district, looking down the road, if we do get pressed for funds, that might be an alternative to reconsider that decision?
Yeah, because since this is on television, I want to be clear that we haven't decided to do that. But, if we do, I'm going to call somebody besides me. But, so, having said that, yes, that's a possibility, but seriously, that is a possibility in terms, I mean, that would certainly be a clear possibility. What we're seeing with districts that are, again, in much worse shape with transportation than we are at the moment, what they're finding it necessary to do is, is not so much that, because some of our neighbors, for example, as a practical matter, they just don't have schools located where you could walk to the schools. And we have something like that as well. When we had to walk zones, we have schools that you really can't walk to, but we do have some that you could, and many people do, by the way. It's not that, I mean, many parents and students choose to walk, but what they've done is, they begin to reduce the number of stops, so that now, there are, in some communities, students are having to walk out of the subdivision to the main road, for example, rather than the bus going in, kind of picking everybody up. So, what begins to happen is, is it's not just walk, either walk or ride, but your walk to the bus stop is a lot longer, in many cases, than what they might have been in the past. And so, and in fact, the walk to the bus stop might approach the walk to school, if you happen, you know, if you live a half a mile from school, there are some districts, you may be walking a half a mile to get on the bus, and then you might ride the bus for five or 10 miles to get to school after that, so. But, yeah, but you're correct, certainly, we were the only district in Hamilton County that had walk zones, by the way. Now, again, our community, all these, all of our communities are different, and certainly, some years ago, Carmel was more developed, if you will, than some of our surrounding neighbors. They've since, you know, we all know that HSE has grown tremendously, and, but if you go back not that far, they were very rural, and, and again, so they didn't talk about, there weren't very many kids to walk to school, because they all lived out in the country. And so, some of... And so some of that's changed, a lot of that's changed. But the fact is, is that prior to that change, we were the only district, and at least, that's contiguous with Carmel. I'm not, I'm not saying like Sheridan, I don't think Sheridan, I'm sure they didn't have walk zones either. So I really believe, I don't think there was a district in Hamilton County that had walk zones, except for Carmel. Okay. Going on to our CPF fund. In the CPF, we were required by statute to have a three-year plan. The first year is financially is the most significant of that plan because whatever that plan reflects up to the maximum funds available, we're actually going to tax to support that fan, that plan. Years two and three, like with any plan, they sometimes get changed, and whatever we put in the plan here, it doesn't have immediate financial implications to taxpayers because, of course, we're only taxing, you know, one year at a time. So this is a little background of our schools. You'll know, we have almost 3 million square feet of space and a little over 700 acres of property, worth about four, over $400 million of insured value. I'd noted the three-year plan. Currently, our CPF has a maximum tax rate of about 22 and 1/2 cents, and raises just over $14 and 1/2 million. Our total fund and plan is, it also includes not only that levy, but also excise tax and financial institution's tax. And so you can see here, estimating revenue to be about $16 million. This is before the circuit breaker reductions. While those to the taxpayers are expressed as credits, to us, they're cuts and reduction in revenue, but also credits in terms of lowering taxes. So we build these plans anticip, because we have, we can't receive more than we ask for and more than we tax or advertise. And so these numbers will be high as compared to what we actually think we're going to receive because we have to anticipate the impact of the circuit breaker, for one. And this year, that was, for the CPF, that was about $600,000, and a little over $1 million for the, all the funds. But for this fund, about $600,000. And so that's anticipated. In this fund, again, the cash balance is, you know, having to be about $900,000 at the beginning of this year. Here, the ending cash balance is not particularly important because the nature of this fund is such that if we have a construction, we have construction projects or renovations and so forth, and at any given time, it just depends, here, in this case, it's, the question is, is how much of that money for that project have we actually spent by December 31st? Not so much how much we're obligated, so it depends on the payment schedule and so forth. So, and this is not a fund that we're going to run out of funds, in the sense, we may not receive as much, probably don't receive as much as we would like to, but the nature of the fund and how the money is used, there is some personnel in here, but most of it's, you know, not, non-personnel. So in the end, we, of course, don't plan to spend more money than we've been approved. As far as some major projects, as compared to years past, we don't have any major projects, and not in terms of the scope that we've had in the past, as far as building new schools and doing, you know, 50 or $100 million projects. But by the more current standard, in 2015, we still have $300,000 to pay off the property that we purchased on Clay Center Road, and this will pay that property off. And then we're allowing for a million dollars for flooring and finishes at the high school. We've talked about that a little bit before. And you'll see here that in each of the three years, you know, most of the money for larger projects is being dedicated to the high school. Of that, about 3 million square feet of space, a million of it's at the high school. So if it seems like we spend a lot of money at the high school, it's because that's basically a third of our school corporation, as far as square footage and so forth. In a lot of ways, it's about a third, but certainly as it relates to facilities. And so we have a lot of finishes, and to replace all the work we did in the mid-'90s is now, which was, you know, upwards of, you know, $100 million is coming due. A lot of that is now up for that mid-cycle, as far as carpeting and flooring and so forth. Then in 2016, we're anticipating replacing the finishes at Town Meadow Elementary School at about $800,000, and then another $1 million at the high school. We don't appropriate, we don't anticipate, you know, a much larger number because, on the, at the high school, because we don't want to do that work all year long. And so we try to do as much as we can during the summer because the nature of the work is, it's not, we don't want to disrupt the educational program. Unlike, if we had to renovate the whole building, you know, you don't have a choice, you can't get it all done in the summer. But with this type of work, we can plan to do it in the summer or over Christmas break and when we're not interfering with the program at all. And then in 2017, another $1.005 at the high school. Whoops. Sorry. And that concludes the presentation. I'll respond to questions that you might have. Yes?
When is the roofing going to be done at Mohawk? Is that 2014?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, 15. We will, we'll do that as soon as we can next year.
Okay, so that, is that part of the 2015 plan?
No, none of that is here.
Oh.
Because that's a, that's a bond issue.
Oh, okay.
And so, so that...
This is being supported by regulations, just the bonds?
Yes, the, yeah, yes, the $6 million of bonds that we sold, and we now have that down in the money and so forth. Some of that work, we will start right away this year yet, and then others, like the roof, the larger projects, we've got an air conditioning system replaced at Smokey Row, for example. And today, we were hoping it just holds out for a couple more days. And so those will be in place. We can get the money soon enough to do them in the summer, so we'll do them mostly in the spring and/or next summer, depending on the scope of the project.
Mr. Phillips?
First of all, Roger, I said it before, and I'll say it again, I think this community is very proud of the facilities that you and Mr. Farron maintained for us. I mean, it's just a point of real community pride. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I did want to ask about our south campus. I didn't see that on our list of facilities. So do we have capital projects, plans for any changes to the south campus?
Short answer would be no, not of any significance. And we kind of see that as a part of Carmel High School in terms of, we don't create a separate page for it, but that's why, because we, you know, that facility's, it's kind of like the football, or the stadium complex. And probably is, you know, we see all that as a part of the high school campus. And given the relatively small size of that property as compared to like a middle school or an elementary school, we just include it as, anything it needs, we take, we, it becomes a part of the high school's funding.
Good question, Greg.
Hmm.
Yes, go ahead.
We can do this at the end or even send it. I'm just curious as to the schedule of where we go from here as far as approval and discussion.
We'll have the next meeting, business meeting, we will have a public hearing, as required by statute, to give opportunity for the public to comment on our budgets. Is, yeah, it's in there.
H4 in the second, no, not the, the next packet.
You received a packet of, kind of the details of the budgets, and that schedule's in there.
There it is.
But we'll have a hearing, and then you still won't adopt the budget. And so you'll, we'll kind of go back to this for purposes of the hearing, and then you'll eventually adopt the budget. I think it's September in it, or October. Yeah, I've got, I'm sorry, I have it now.
October.
Yeah, you'll, at the October 27th meeting, which is a regular school board meeting, will be the last time you'll see this, and that's when you'll adopt. It has to be adopted before November.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Yep. And should it, if I can conclude, then we will submit that to the state, because the fact that you've adopted it, it's the state that finally has to approve it, and they will make whatever modifications they choose to make. And then we would hope that we would receive, although we haven't been in recent years, we would, because these budgets start in January, but the past few years, we don't actually get the approval until, you know, February, March, which doesn't seem like a good program because we're spending money before we know finally how much we're going to get. And if that's not bad enough, when it comes to the capital fund, that circuit breaker, you know, is even later than that. So we're looking, you know, that's often like April. And so I'm not that fond of the current system because it's well into the, into the budget year before we actually know how much money we're going to get approved for.
You guys should put that in the legislative priority.
It'd be okay with me.
Roger, I had a question. Did we, at one point in the last couple of years, receive some TIF funding?
We didn't receive TIF funding. I think what you may be remembering is, is when we, when we first were approved for the referendum, the TIF, the money in the TIF districts, or the TIF districts received that money. And then there was legislation change, and that was not the intent, at least some of the legislators, so they, the statute was changed, and that, at that point, we received about $2 million more money as a result of the referendum than we started out with, which was very fortuitous, aside from the obvious. We also had the 100-year recession hit, and so when we, when we had that on the ballot and were making assumptions, we were not assuming that that, we assumed that revenue was going to increase because historically, our, you know, growing school district, our assessed value had increased for the last 30 years. And then the recession hit, and it actually declined. So one year, I know, I can remember that it declined a half a million dollars, just in that one year. So, but I think that's what you're remembering, is that we now get the money, including their...
Only that one year?
No, 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 it's recurring. It's recurring, and, but the first year, really what happened is, is the TIF districts benefited from the school's referendum to the tune of about $2 million. And the state really said, you know, this was, the taxpayers voted on this to benefit the school district, not the TIF districts. And so, to our benefit, beginning in the second year, the school district got that additional money, and we have been getting it ever since then.
Thank you. Any other questions? As they pop up, send them to all of us, as well as Roger, and they'll post it so we can all receive them. Thank you very much, Roger.
Thank you.
Dr. Wall, do you have anything to report this evening?
Since we've met, we've had a tremendous start to the school year, very positive. All 15 buildings humming right along. Thank you to the teachers and administrators and all the instructional assistants and secretaries and bus drivers and cafeteria personnel. Everybody's doing a great job, been in the buildings, positive spirit, really positive start to the year.
Wonderful, thank you. Board members, anything you'd like to report or share? Mr. Phillips?
Yes, I think I will have the pleasure and honor of welcoming our newest board member, Mr. Michael Kirshner, as our audience. Congratulations, Mike, on your successful non-competition.
Thank you, Greg. Any other comments from the board? Yes?
I would just like to take a moment to make people aware, because I was excited to hear this. Our soccer team, on Friday, their game on Friday, September 5th, is actually dedicating that game to Make Good Decisions Brett Finblue Memorial Soccer Game. And they're going to use that game to help educate the community on the Indiana's Lifeline Law, which helps protect minors who might be in a drinking situation, to then make the good decision to possibly save a life if one of their friend's lives is in danger or they think it's in danger. It's a very, very important law for, especially like our high schoolers and early college. So I just put that out there for a community, that's a great opportunity to get some information to some of our kids, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, we have an upcoming three-day weekend, so please enjoy and have a great, safe time with your families. With that, meeting adjourned.